So.
It's the overspending.
Right, yeah, right. And no, just no respect for what, you know, people for resources. What are you saying, Kirk? Call of Duty at the township is considering villages like Harvey are laying off workers and knowing some of these villages not providing assistance to Call of Duty?
It's a game.
I know. Are you, what do you, what, I don't, I don't go, what, uh, what you were trying to tell us by that, um, Crook, maybe tell us more. And Amanda says, hey, hey, Amanda.
Hey, Mandy. Hit that like button, that link button, Mandy.
Yes, thank you for reminding, yes. And I'm, I, you know, I have to get on, I've been so behind, I need to set up a Patreon because I love doing local journalism and all this stuff, you guys, but Daddy needs some, he's got, needs some money because real estate sales are slow. And, um, I, I, I always want to be positive, but I have to say, you know, try to be wise with your money because I feel like if the feds do not come down with the the interest rates, that it is, it's very possible that we're headed into a possible recession. But like I said, I don't, I don't want to scare people. I'm not saying that to be scared. I'm just saying, just, just do things that, do whatever these public boards don't do. So in other words, don't take random trips to Las Vegas and stay at the Bellagio. Like, uh, the school board one fifty-two did last fall. I, I got that FOIA back, you know? And all this other stuff, you know, you can still enjoy your life, but just try to just don't overdo it, you know, make sure you have some money saved up.
Because you know, the funny thing about, we had a recession, what about maybe ten years ago? They said it was at some into two thousand. I never even noticed that it was a recession.
Oh, really? Okay. Good. That's good.
So you live, but you don't be, just, you just be cautious about what you're doing.
Right, right. Exactly. No, I agree. Uh, Idro says they need someone to drive the food to the residents. I don't know if the township does that, but I can tell you Restoration Ministries in Harvey does that and they'll serve anybody.
No, the township does do that because I remember it was a, this is when Tiffany was in office and they have a team. And it was like a lot of young people and they had these vests on and it was going door to door to see if you need anything. And it was like, you know, they had food boxes and it was, I didn't want one.
Hmm. Okay, so, so the township does deliver. I mean, I know they can. I just don't know how. But for instance, this is another thing, like someone in Dixmoor was telling me that under Tiffany, she, she requested some food boxes for the Dixmoor, uh, mobile home park. One of the mobile home parks. And she got a whole bunch of boxes. And under this current board, she made the same request this year and they said, no, we, sorry, we don't go there. And she said, but we're, we're in Thornton Township. And they were like, oh, they were trying to tell her, no, that's, that's not Thornton Township or, you know, making excuses. So it's really bad, especially when you have them spending lots of money on other things, you know? So it looks bad. Kirk says, meaning this should be a call of duty for the township, considering a lot of workers for several of these municipalities. Oh, yeah, you're, you're saying they should help out. Okay. Cause I didn't, I'm like, you're saying call of duty. Are you trying, you're not trying to tell people you wanted to shoot somebody, are you? I'm like, okay, I didn't think that was, that's what you meant.
For just, I don't pay your taxes at all. Are you kidding?
Yeah, I was gonna say, well, you know, you know, they would come after us, unfortunately.
Not only would they come after you, somebody will go behind you, pay your taxes and you look up and somebody have bought your house from you.
Hmm, that's true. Yes, because the system is so corrupt. That is, that is very true. Ramona says, I agree. Help, they should help Harvey due to Harvey, due to Harvey being stressed, help employees and their families. Right, right. Well, that last township meeting, I, like I said, I was there, field people were there, you saw the, maybe you saw the video, maybe you didn't, but they were not worried at all. They were very happy to just move really quickly through that meeting. They were not concerned about saying, we're, this is, we're going to show you that we're, we're, um, reducing expenses. We've eliminated unnecessary staff and, uh, you know, programs and this is how we're being more efficient. No, they were not. Not.
And that really, before you go further, right, I think that really should be a, 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 a measurement or a ruler, like when these new politicians are coming in, how are you going to meet these needs? Because it's easiest to say in the beginning, yeah, we're gonna help people, we're gonna build roads. But you ain't, you're just telling us stuff. You know what I'm saying? Like, how you gonna do it? Like, really do it? Like, I'm, I'm tired of being like Vaseline, you know what I'm saying? Like, tell us what is gonna happen? If you can't do it, I respect, you say you can't do it.
Right, right.
I'm just saying.
Like with the FOIAs, when they were like, oh, it's so, it's all like two thousand dollars per FOIA. There was, the township was saying that, but it just, it's, it's really stupid things like that, that I'm like, guys, we can't believe that. Like, come on, they, they, they have the answers. They just don't want us to share.
Yeah, because the FOIA that I did, um, about, um, Micro Motors owing, owing seven million dollars. They asked for the correspond, they sent me the correspondence. And the, uh, the, the, uh, the, uh, correspondence for, that they, that they sent to Micro Motors. I don't know why he's lying. Micro Motors, but they didn't, but they, they blacked out a lot of papers. So I didn't even, they never even answered my question.
Hmm. Right, right. And I, I, I even got some, some, a few answers today back from the Harvey FOIA, uh, person and I forget, a few of them though, I think, I think all of them were basically like, no, we already gave you that information. Because I emailed them and I said, hey, you didn't give me all the information I asked for. So see, that's what aggravates me. And then you have to appeal or, and/or then you have to go get a law firm, you know, so. And Kirk brought up the firemen. Yeah, yeah, there's people that, they just don't freaking care, Kirk. They don't care, they don't care if people are having babies and they have to, they, 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 they can't afford food or diapers or pay their, so they just don't, that's the crazy thing. Like, they just don't care. Amanda says, that doesn't make any sense. They know Dixmoor. So, exa, they know Napoleon has people. No, they're very smart. Napoleon grew up in Dixmoor.
Facts.
So there's no excuse. But I mean, doesn't that make you look bad when for everything that, that, that people would tease Tiffany about and, and, and try to trash her, like, she fed people and she, and that lady, that lady, she wasn't a huge Tiffany fan, but she just said, she's like, when I asked last year, I got, I got as many food baskets as I needed for the people in the mobile homes. So you need somebody to give toys to children. We do have, we do have a lot of groups that do that. Um, yeah, I don't, I didn't know how they were going to get by. I still don't know how they're getting by, Crook, our firefighters. I have no idea. And Clark is AWOL. He is totally, can't find him. Knowing a lot of city employees are being laid off in the surrounding township, Tiffany would have been banking on this. Right, exactly. You know, love her or hate her, I think she would have. I think she would have said, oh, here, we'll help you or something. She, she probably would have. Not that I'm giving her any points. I'm just saying that's what those resources are for, that's what the township is for. You know, I agree, I agree, I agree. Well, I'll tell you what it hap, has been happening at the township though. Somebody brought up, hey, do you think we could get some, some, um, some support for women's health, like, because I think, uh, they had cut a lot of the, the mental health counselors and such. And particularly they, they had asked about help for women, like who'd experienced rape or domestic, you know, violence or whatever. And then the response to that was they had the session of men's health. So it's like, even when they, even when people directly ask for stuff, the board just does what it wants anyway. So it just, you know, anyway, I don't, I don't want to just bitch about the, about what the boards are not doing because I do want to, to get solutions.
And that's why we want to resolve.
Right, exactly. Owen Glynnis brought up infinite hands in coordination with Alderman Chapin, hosting a big Christmas event on December twentieth Thornton Township. Yes, so do be aware of that. Um, that will be at the high school in the fieldhouse on the twentieth, right? Is that, it's a Saturday, I think, Glynnis, right? I think it's a Saturday. So yeah, that's another event. I know Colby gave out some turkeys this past weekend. I saw Glynnis in some of the videos there. Um, you guys were at the senior home too. And then the mayor, I did see him in the phone. I didn't go, but I saw him in the photos for when they, uh, was that Saturday with the city too? But they had, they supposedly were giving away turkeys at city hall. I saw him in those photos, otherwise I haven't seen the mayor around.
Where he getting turkeys from?
Supposedly, they said from the towing companies. And then my question was, oh, is that the money that, that, um, was taken from people when, you know, when they extort people, like they gotta pay a thousand, two thousand dollars to get their co, their, their cars back after they've been towed for some small offense? Because in that case, it's just another case of like, here, we took this money from you and now we're going to give you food and you're gonna, you're gonna, um, vote for us and think that we're wonderful. And this is, you know, even though this is, we got it using the money we took from you. So, um, oh, Paul.
Hey, Paul. Hey, Paul.
He's asking us, hey, Heidi Love and Ryan, are, are either of you going to the township meeting tomorrow? I can't make it.
I can't make it.
Okay.
What time is it?
Can't make it? Yeah, what time is it, Paul? Is it like six? Aren't they usually at six? And Kirk says tomorrow's running, meeting Ryan, you'd actually go with their address at six fifteen? Okay. Well, you know, the big thing about tomorrow's meeting that I do want to find out is because I guess they're, they called a special meeting just to vote on insurance. And I, I asked somebody why. I was like, why? And they said, well, remember Napoleon has connection to, I think it's called Mac something or whatever, Insurance Group. And then that's why they asked him to step down because he used to be over the Insurance Regulation Commission or something. So, so the question, I guess our question should be, who, who is, is, um, you know, going to be providing insurance to the township? Is, is it a company that's connected to Napoleon? Or Paul, as he had mentioned, I think the Speaker of the House's son, or not, no, no, former Speaker Madigan's son was also somehow in that. Oh, seven. Paul says seven.
Oh, seven?
I don't know.
How am I can make that?
Someone needs to ask who the insurance broker is and why it is so urgent. Oh, okay, okay. Well, I guess we should do it. I could, I could add it to my schedule. I think I could. It's part of the committee. Kirk says, okay, which committee? I don't know.
That's crazy. All this stuff is.
My schedule.
Right, all this, you know, it's interesting to me about politics in the South suburbs, just period. Everybody's connected to somebody.
Uh huh.
Like, who was independent from everybody?
Right. And, and all of the, like, uh, I just always go back to like, to Mary and Valerbia, uh, two ladies that is the trustees, remember how they were just so vocal? And now that it's almost like our, we, it's almost like we, we have to do a wellness check on them. Like, are they okay? They're so quiet. It's like, what happened? Are you guys not feeling well? Wow, how did you, how did you get so quiet so quickly?
Yeah, it's funny, like at work, it's a question that we, I ask people, are, are you being abused?
Ah, you know, that's so funny. You know, we should do that. Someone, when they go up there for public comment, someone should say, um, trustees blink twice if Napoleon is threatening to blackmail you. Blink three times if, you know, like, do you, do you need help? Are you unable to ask for help?
Yes, SOS. That's hilarious.
Yeah, yeah. No, I know. It's, it's, it's absolutely crazy. Um, insurance for the state. Bess says, no, they're very quiet. Yeah. Um.
Question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So you, I heard you say that you had, uh, Tyrone Rogers', uh, expense account. What he be spending his money on? Because I was like, I don't see much.
I can, sure, yeah, I can pull that up if you want.
Like we said, when I, oh, last night I went to the submarine play. I always say, I'll go get me something to eat. But I'm not stopping in Harvey to go get nothing to eat. And it was that night and I saw, uh, at the car wash again, because it's dark. People are, it was a lot of people gathered over there. And now I see a lady's in the back, like she's sleeping on one of them, them pillars that they put back there so you can't get into the car wash. I said, did he not see this sugar honey iced tea? He must, when he go down hall, so he turned his head straight, straight. He don't look left or right.
Right. No, that's exactly like, that's what I'm saying. You, you, you know, you know, um, you know, he knows, you know, he knows. But who knows if he's getting paid off or whatever? That, that's why I, I wanted to briefly go over, um, uh, oh, this, this is just like an AI thing. Maybe I should go back to the last results. But so the Black Panther Party did something that was called, um, they didn't invent it, but, but something that I really respect that they, they did mutual aid. Again, I didn't invent that, but um, where they would, they, they did, uh, practice programs for the community. Uh, they did a lot of other positive things. Uh, but they also did, it, it's basically called, um, parallel systems. So when you, when you're, when you're faced with government that is unresponsive and corrupt and like, you know, we could just go on for hours complaining about the things that they don't do. So one of the things that you, that, that, that people can do and that revolutionaries or people that want to change, uh, have done is to establish parallel systems. So the, um, the Black Panthers are, are a great example of that. And I wanted to pull up a little bit again, because we usually, we, 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 we know a lot of the problems more so than I think we know the solution. So I wanted to, um, pull that up. Okay. So, um, let's see, so they had, they had free food, they had, uh, safe seniors against a fearful environment. It was a nonprofit created by the Black Panthers. A group of senior residents asked the Black Panthers to launch the organization to help seniors learn self-defense techniques. Um, okay, that was in Oakland. Okay. They off, the safe program offered free transportation services, which allowed seniors to conduct banking transactions more safely. Okay. Uh, free food program. Okay, uh, to supplement the groceries of black and poor people. Um, so they did, you know, they had, they, they helped with food, right? I think that's great. Uh, luckily we do at least have, have, um, some decent food pantries around. Uh, free healthcare. I think that's awesome, you know, um. There was another thing, dibbidi 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 dibbidi. It, oh, it didn't, it didn't list the, um, it didn't list the, uh, the breakfast program, but there's that. And then they also, um, let me see, community survival programs. But you know, they had a little bit of everything. They had, uh, oh, health clinics. Yeah, yeah. They had, um, community patrols. Yes, that's the other thing I was thinking of. So does this sound familiar? Police brutality ran rampant in black neighborhoods with little accountability. Well, gee, has that changed much since the nineteen sixties? No. The Panthers organized armed patrols to monitor police activities and protect residents. They use California's open carry laws to make their presence known while educating people about their legal rights. Uh, these patrols raised awareness and deterred police violence, but also drew intense scrutiny and repression from law enforcement. So yeah, they received flak, but I mean, I, honestly, I think it was a good thing. Um, so that's something that we could do, you know, to educate people about whether it's carrying mace, um, or, uh, uh, you know, communicating with your neighbors about if you see things that are, you know, suspicious or, or your, your rights to legally carry a gun, you know, whatever people are comfortable with. That's something that we could do that does not depend on the politicians. Uh, the educational initiatives, okay, they, they, they started liberation schools to teach black history, political theory and critical thinking. I love that. Um, but this, this is, this is what I think I wanted to share. Lessons for today, build programs that address immediate needs. The Panthers didn't wait for permission or funding. They started where the need was greatest, whether it was feeding kids or offering healthcare. And again, they're, they were not asking politicians because the politicians, just like in the Southland, they were aggressively, I would say against the people, you know, or just ignoring. Um, action steps. So what could we do? Organize food security initiatives, free meals, community fridges. Create mobile clinics or networks for mental health support. Um, tie aid to advocacy. Mutual aid wasn't just about survival. So if you're going to help people, right, we also have to educate people. How do you get engaged in the community? How do we bring change? Um, do, 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 guard against the state repression. So, um, unfortunately, uh, the FBI used the COINTEL program, COINTEL pro, program to infiltrate them. That's in Fred Hampton was killed. And some of the other people were killed in Chicago, but it was because they were so successful, although they were doing the right thing. Um, oh, this is another thing too, like avoid centralized leadership, distribute responsibilities across trusted networks to reduce vulnerability. Here's my thing, we, we have a problem of, uh, everybody wants a savior. So like, let's just say, I'll just pick on Colby for instance, you know, and people are like, oh, but once we get a better mayor, let's say Colby being, she'll be a better mayor and then everything will be better. Is that fair to Colby? She's one person. She's one person.
But I think like in African American community, but in the African American community, traditionally the churches were and the pastor were the savers for our community. So that's why we still look and talk in that same manner.
Yeah, and maybe the churches were active more. I mean, that would definitely help. But it's like, you know, it's, it's just very common culturally, like even with the president, right? People are just like, well, if we just get a better president, all the US's problems will be fixed, you know? And it's not really realistic, you know, it's like we, we, we tend to put a lot of faith into like one or two or a few people. And it's like, that's a lot. And, and like, uh, even with the Black Panthers and other groups, the FBI knew how successful they were and saw them as a threat and they came in and they killed some of the leaders, you know? Um, it didn't totally kill the movement, but I mean, it was, it was, it was pretty harsh. So I think that's some, a lesson that we learned too, is that you know, we want to train everybody because if we just have, you know, one or two people saying, hey, just put them in charge and they'll fix all of Harvey. Well, okay, but then what if something happens to them? What if they get sick or they can't serve in office or they have to move? Or, you know what I mean? Um, so, uh, let's see. Yeah, bring people together, take collective action. Yeah, yeah. So anyway, um, community solidarity, what didn't work? Oh, visibility. Yeah, they were very visible targets, sustainability. Um, okay, anyway. But recommendations for today, smarts, start small, think big. So like, what do we need? Focus on immediate tangible needs. So that's one of the things I wanted to ask. Well, what can we do? What are some things that we could do to try to meet Harvey's needs? To meet our needs without relying on the politicians. Um, security, we have to be safe. We have to be secure. Right? So I think we need plans for that to keep ourselves safe. Again, I don't think we should rely on police because sometimes they help, sometimes they don't, even in, in really good communities. Um, partnerships, right? Build leadership from within. Uh, control the narrative. Yeah. So anyway, I just wanted to share some of those ideas in that, um, just so we don't feel like we're reliant on some outside saviors. And even Amanda said that in her video that she made the other day, and I liked that because she said, well, we have to, we can't wait for any saviors. We're, we're our saviors, you know? We're, we're the people that are going to bring the change. And I was like, yeah.
Definitely we are, but it's still at the end of the day, you said, because my, my people on my block, they don't come to these meetings and they're not even interested in coming to these meetings. And my one, and my one of the, she's a senior, she own, the last mayor she know, knows is, uh, Kellogg. She don't really know nothing about Clark. She not interested in knowing about Clark.
Yeah. Hmm. And it's, it, it's hard, you know, it ta, it takes, it takes a lot longer to get the community motivated, but I do think in the end it's the right thing to do. Uh, but yeah, no, you can definitely see, some people are not worth spending ti, time on honestly, like it probably people like her, it's like, it might take her years and she may never come around, but that's okay, you know, because there are a lot of people that do want to take part in community and they want to help out and they just need to be encouraged, you know, how. Uh, Crook wanted to share about the Young Lords. Yes, exactly. Very similar. Actually, several of the street gangs started off as, um, organizations that were trying to fill the gaps because they were being neglected by, by, by public boards. They just were, you know, the, the, the politicians didn't care about their communities. So exactly. So there's a lot of lessons that we can take. Um, I think all we got is us. I like that, Kirk. But, um, but yeah, maybe even just some, some, uh, shoots, some basic neighborhood watch stuff. I mean, I don't know what you do, uh, Diana, but like on my block, I just ta, I try to talk to people and I'm like, please tell me if something happens, you know, like if, if your car gets broken into or even if you, excuse me, even if you think it's something small, like let's talk to each other and tell each other because then that could prevent, um, you know, more break-ins or, or it could prevent things from escalating.
Right. I agree, I agree. Well, I'm going to jump back into the comments. Ryan.
Okay, thanks for coming on yet. And, um, yeah, we should definitely do this again and, and, and figure out maybe some, some positive things that we can, we can, um, enact, you know, uh, I even thought about doing some Christmas decorations, like for my block, like on the corner or something, you know, even though, yes, they stand the chance of being taken down by Mr. Grinch, the mayor, but you know what I mean? I was like, hey, you know what? I have some that I don't, I don't necessarily need to use all the decorations I have. And so I thought maybe just like a little, there's an old, I think it used to be a, like a box sign and it just hasn't been used for years. But I thought, hey, what if I just get a piece of plywood and paint something like, it can be very simple, like welcome to, uh, you know, welcome to our block or something, you know? And then put some, some ornaments or Christmas stuff. I, you know, again, it's something small, but it's something that I know I can do and I don't, and like the neighbors, if they wanted to help, like I don't, I don't have to wait for anybody.
Uh, are you on a, a block club?
Uh, I mean, sort of informally. Yeah, I've tried, I, I've basically been, you know, block club captain for, for the years that I've been here. Uh, yeah, and sometimes people take part, sometimes they don't. We had a great block party a few years ago. Um, but, uh, but yeah, it's, it's, I don't know. I always feel that beautification is such a big thing too, you know? Speaking of that, I did want to share, there is a Harvey Neighborhood Network meeting next Wednesday, next Wednesday at six PM at Restoration Ministries at their building off one hundred and fifty ninth. Um, so any Harvey resident is welcome to come, but that's, that's the resident advisory board. So Diana, you're welcome. Any Harvey resident is welcome to come. That is a group that is trying to bring together, um, different, like, you know, like for me with the Harvey Historical Society. I know there's some other people that come and they, maybe they have businesses in Harvey and plus their residents, or they might work in nonprofits. So they're, they're a positive group. They're trying to bring people together, um, and do stuff, more stuff with beautification, but how do you guys feel about that? Like, I feel like that's something we could definitely do on our own, like, like, what if we just do some small, it, it could be a small beautification, like, let's say Diana just says, look, this one block near me is so horrible. Oh, like, like, like something on Halsted, you know, like I, I don't know if there's anything we could do around the old, um, car wash, but, but you know what I mean? Just, just say like, okay, on a Saturday morning, let's just all meet for three hours and go pick up trash in a certain area, you know? Something very simple, but things like that really do make a difference, you know? And then after a while, you're like, oh, if this feels so much better, like you, you, you want to be in this area because it doesn't have trash everywhere. But what do you guys think about something simple like that? Because we, we know we have tons of problems and please share the petition by all means. We want Clark gone. I know we can do that, but in the meantime, maybe there's, we could do something small like that. Or like I said, go put up some, a few Christmas decorations somewhere or something. So yeah, let me, let me, let me know what you guys think about that, but ah, you know, we'll do, we'll do what we can. But in the meantime, please, please do, uh, share the petition, share, sign. Um, we've already got some signatures and some great feedback and, um, yeah, I think that's about it, right? You know, I don't think I forgot anything else. But what else did I have in the agenda? No, that was it. Yeah, I can close that. Okay. That one's tough. A French, Idro, you, you have a new name. You were so fat because I saw your comments where you were like, something like, you want the Black Panthers to provide security? I'm like, no, 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 not that. I wasn't saying that I want the, uh, the, uh, Black Panthers to, but just, just as an educational thing to, to say that, you know, there have been a lot of successful community groups in the past that they're like, hey, let's take care of each other, you know, we're not going to sit around and wait for the police to, to do what they need to do. You need ice. Ice? No, we don't need ice here. That's not going to help. Now wait, what were you talking about, Kirk? The democratic machine? Now, wait, what were you talking about, Kirk? The democratic machine? Yeah, the machine, again, we're not gonna wait for help from them because they're not, it's not gonna come. Oh, thanks, Ramona. Thank you, Ryan, for your, for your input, wanting a positive change. But I do mean that even if it's just something small, you know, like let's figure out some things we can do. I mean, I'm busy, we're all busy. It's not like, it's not like we have tons of resources, but you know, maybe we can do a few things here and there. Thank you, Mr. Ramona. Uh, and let me glance really quickly to see, I hope you all have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Um, this is Thanksgiving week. So Paul says, there's a special township meeting tomorrow night at seven PM. I did add it to my schedule, so I will try to go. There's Harvey Housing Court is supposed to be Wednesday, even, even though the. Even though the city is shut, shut down, you know, you know, there's still. They're still doing their extortion court because they want that money from people. Uh, you were just responding to what we were talking about earlier. Yeah, the machine is always not helpful totally, so. Your favorite hustler. Hello, your favorite hustler. I, I don't know who, who you, who you are, but you're a hustler, huh? So yeah, that's, I hope that's some positive things, you know, maybe throwing up some Christmas decorations randomly somewhere, maybe. Uh, picking up trash somewhere for an hour. And I know it's a little colder out right now, so it's probably not people's favorite thing to do to hang out time, but. There's always something we can do. I, I do think beautification is important though. I mean, it just makes you feel so much better when your surroundings look better, you know? Happy Thanksgiving to everyone in the chat. Listen to you all. Yes. Thank you, Ramona. Bested still taking those fines. Yeah, they do. I'm telling you, when you go to Harvey Court. The, either the mayor's there and if it's not him, it'll be Corinne Davis, who lives in South Island. But she's the city manager here in Harvey and is a horrible city manager. And then Ramona Simpson, who is the, I think, chief of staff or something like, you know, number two. And they'll come and they just sit and stare and watch like at the show to see how much the judge. You know, not really a judge, but. And the city prosecutor, Patrick Walsh, um, can extort out of people. It's really disgusting. Yes, Idro, do you, oh, that's right. You're, uh, in Quebec, you guys, the Canadians already had their Thanksgiving in October. Yeah, so this is not a holiday for Canada. Ooh, excuse me, guys. Uh, what time do you, do you guys think, uh, would be, you know, if we wanted to do some citizen, uh, meetings, some citizen town halls? In the future, what time is usually best for people, um? Evening wise, is it usually something like this, like on Monday? The Monday nights are probably pretty good for me unless, unless it's a city council meeting. But you know, maybe we can think about that in, in the future. Uh, Beth, are you gonna go to the meeting tomorrow, the township meeting? Seven PM is a good time for you. Okay. It's all good. Okay, that's good to know. I'm so glad you're so all the way from Quebec, like you're so concerned about us. That is so sweet. See, it shows that people care.
People care.
Amanda says Monday nights, Saturday mornings, Sunday early evenings. Okay. So probably Monday nights, you know, like maybe a Monday night where there's not a city council meeting. Uh, but that, that way just, uh, I'd, I'd love to just have an open forum, something consistent where people can share if they want. And Beth, you said I might, okay. I guess I'll go tomorrow. I have enough work to do, but maybe I'll go because. Paul says he can't make it and. We need to, I guess we need to find out who is, who we're gonna be paying for all this insurance tomorrow. At the township. Mandy says, hi, Ramona. And, um, I start thinking if you, for Harvey, if you have not already, if you do want to run for a position. I'm running for, uh, second ward alderman. I know Colby's running for mayor. Twenty twenty seven races will be here before you know it, so think about that. Napoleon, tell Napoleon, you're saying, correct? I said the firemen need some boxes over there, right? Yeah, I know, yeah. Thank you, Ryan. Paul says, yeah, no, I, I should be able to go, Paul. It's on the point I said to go run some food services over there with the firemen for the holiday, considering that ninety percent of them are laid off and they could use them out, right? Yeah. And I did tell the guys, the, the firefighters about, uh, you know, Restoration Ministries and then. There, we have a, a few other really good food pantries, uh, just in Harvey alone. So I, I do hope that they avail themselves of that help. Ramona, Paul says the township meeting is tomorrow at seven, I guess. The special meeting, it's a special meeting. Which I don't understand because last week, it was on the agenda to vote for insurance. I don't unders. Uh, yeah, I don't understand why they had to call a separate meeting for it. That's weird. Very strange. But yeah, you, Ramona, if you can go, we should go. We should do it. We should totally do it. And what link did I tell you guys I should, I, oh, I need to fix the link to the Facebook page in the, in the petition. That's right. Does anybody really, really? You're going, oh, yay, okay, Ramona, you're going, yay. So you're going, Beth's maybe going. Diana says she should be able to make it. Okay, good. We'll make it a date. We'll make it a local date. Let's do it. Seven o'clock tomorrow and we'll see what's going on. Does anybody really, really like to, you know, to do like? Christmas or holiday decorations? Cause that, that is something that we could, we could try to. Jazz up Harvey with, you know, maybe do some guerrilla decorations downtown or, or on people's blocks, maybe. Something to make things look prettier. Beth's smiley. Is that, are you for sure gonna go on a, on Beth? Did legs? Or pull your leg and not pull your legs? Oh my gosh, I can't even see the right expression. You do? Okay. Cause yeah, like I said, it's, I have on my block, it's just this old sign, this old like. I think it was probably a block sign at some point. I mean, it wouldn't, I don't think it'd be too expensive. I have, I have a whole bunch of old paint samples laying around, you know, I have some plywood. Pull my leg. Or I, you know, I'm sorry, I said the wrong expression. Yeah, that's like if I'm joking. What did I mean to say? Twisting your arm. I knew it was something with a body part, see? Just got the wrong body, the wrong expression for the wrong body part, but you, you knew what I meant, Beth. We're twisting your arm and not pulling your leg. Ah, you guys weren't even gonna correct me. Oh my God. Now, you know what? I have to. I really should go watch some. Bodycan videos from July fourteenth, because I, I got some new videos that Harvey finally sent. Isn't that crazy? Like. October, November, getting stuff from July. So I'm not really super thrilled about that, but I need to, to see. To see what they sent. Okay, I'm updating this petition right now. Thank you for those of you that liked and shared, uh, the, the. The live as well as the. The petition, you know, please don't forget to share that petition. Like I said, I'm gonna fix the link right now and let me double check and make sure it's working. What? Again? Huh, that's weird. I wonder why it's not opening. That's so strange. What's on those videos? That's what I have to find out from the fourteenth, which Beth, you were there, uh. Diana, you were there, um. Harvey has been absolutely horrible. They did send some videos, you know, a few months ago, but. Uh, they kept leaving out certain videos that were like, uh. This is when I know the officers were talking to me after I was assaulted and battered and they were all wearing their video. Their, their body cameras, like what do you mean you don't have that footage? See, that's the kind of stuff that Harvey does that drives me nuts. So they lie to your face. Oh, we don't have it. No, we don't have that information. Really, really? Like, I was there. I was there myself. Beth, you were there. It's like, uh, no, we, we, we know you have it unless you did some sort of. Something illegal to erase it, you know, it's like, we, we know you've got it. Yeah, that's the weirdest thing. Okay, let me try this again. Why won't the link come up to the group? It's so weird. Anyway, I'll have to look at that again. Uh, Geisha Stokes, she attacked you. Exactly. Yep, yep. We haven't forgotten about that either. We're gonna get on that, so. All right. So yeah, I gotta go watch some of those videos. I'm not really too thrilled about it, but I gotta see what we, see what, what stuff we found. All right. Uh, thanks, everybody for joining. Bonsoir, bonne nuit, and, uh, we'll talk soon. Au revoir. Oh, sorry, Ramona, I just saw your question. What do they mean they don't have videos? Well, that, it's a. Some of the videos, yeah, they were saying that they, they didn't have. Or like, oh, we sent you all of them. And you're like. Well, we were standing there with all those officers filming. We know that there's video there, so yeah, very shady. Oh, good night, Glenda. See, I didn't know you were still with us. Thanks for joining in. Yep. We'll talk soon, everybody, and then hopefully, lies, exactly, Ramona, lies, lies, they lie to your face. Uh, but I'll see you, uh, uh, see you hopefully tomorrow night at seven at the township meeting. Signing off for now.